All right, we got the green light.
Hey.
Mayor, so the lectern mic is working. Once we get to council discussion, we should be able to get these back on.
Okay, so go ahead.
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Good afternoon. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to present the mayor, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson, council members. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to present the report of the Military Economic Development Advisory Committee, also known as the MEAC. I am Fenton Priest, and it is an honor and privilege, I limit, honor and privilege for me to serve as chair of this committee. And I'm really excited. I've got some support today, so if I have any issues with my briefing, I know I've got folks that can step in and help me. Former Chairman Dick Dunlevy, Admiral Dick Dunlevy, Phil Olson. Also have with us General Fran Wilson, and also former SEAL Commodore Bob Reeve, so from the committee. So thank you very much for joining me today. And like I said, feel free to jump in if you think I'm struggling a little bit on this. Also Steve Herbert's here, and Kit, well, and our newest member, Kit Chop has joined us. So thank you, Kit, for being here. Steve Herbert's here, Charles, also members of the committee, and Joe Strange, Development Authority. So thank you very, very much for being here for part of this briefing. It is really, like I said, an honor and privilege for me to serve as a chairman of this group. A little bit about me, I'm a local guy. I went to Cox High School. Go Falcons.
Yeah.
And I went on Navy ROTC scholarship up to UVA, joined the Navy.
That's two strikes already.
Joined the Navy with the idea that, you know, I'd fulfill my scholarship obligation and then maybe move on to bigger and better things. And then, as it turned out, I kind of liked what I was doing. And about 33 years later, I got a letter from the Navy saying, it's time for you to go home. You've, you gotta make room for a younger guy. So like I tell, I used to tell my kids, I said, that was kind of along the way. I got picked, got selected for flag rank, and I said, this is kind of a example of how miracles can happen, and maybe God's got a bigger plan for you than you have for yourself. So I was very blessed to have that experience and to retire as a rear admiral in the Navy. And that was in October 2007. And then shortly thereafter, in 2008, I was asked to join the MEAC. So in the beginning, if I can, in the beginning, MEAC was formed in March of 2008, a resolution requested by Vice Mayor Louis Jones. And it was as a result from the BRAC, the Base Realignment and Closure Commission process in 2005, it really highlighted and brought to light, I guess, that there were some major issues between the city and the Navy leaders in the area. And these were things that, you know, I guess were maybe not that well-known until the BRAC process. And the city, you know, really took a strong action to try to improve the relationships that seemed to have broken down over the years, and started a number of tangible things that I'll talk about in a later slide. But I guess the bottom line upfront, that MEAC was one of the actions taken to help strengthen our relationship, the city's relationship with Navy leaders and the military community in Hampton Roads. And I'm here to say, the good news to take away is that I think here we are about 15 years later, and really, things are very, very good in the, in the area of relationship with the Navy, that we've had a real partnership in many, many initiatives. And again, some of those I'll talk about later. But the purpose of the committee from the very beginning was to work cooperatively with the Department of Economic Development, City of Virginia Beach, to support and strengthen the city-Navy relations. So again, starting from 2008, is directed by the city council resolution, we were tasked to perform outreach to Navy and other military commands, to look for and support and give advice and counsel on economic development opportunities that affect the military community, to assist in any way possible with workforce development and helping to keep exiting military with their, with their superb talent and work ethic in the Virginia Beach area, and then support other Virginia Beach military affair efforts. We have a committee of 18 members. They can be senior military officers, senior enlisted personnel, or qualified civilians. As you can see, what we have here is mostly senior military officers. A number of these, I guess, six of us, about a third of this committee actually have been serving since 2008, so since the beginning. So we're all coming up on our third five-year term, and according to the clerk's office and our bylaws, 15 years is our term limit. So we have a number of us that are going to be rotating out, and we are really excited to have someone like Kit on board. We're looking for newer members, people that are more recently retired, maybe. Again, what we, what we, you know, when I joined, again, I retired in '07, I joined MEAC in '08. We are looking for folks like that. If you know military folks or people that meet this criteria, you know, we are definitely interested in filling our ranks over 2023 as we, as many of us start to rotate out. We've also had some other, some other vacancies. Many of you probably know Craig Quigley, Admiral Quigley moved on. So we filled his position. In fact, that's the one that Kit is filling. So we're, we do have, you know, again, some new folks we're looking to come on and support us. Do want to welcome Rocky Holcomb, council member. We're really excited to have you come on board and be part of our, part of our team. We also, you know, invite you to come. We meet the, most Mondays, most, the last Monday of most months, where we generally have a monthly meeting schedule. And Mayor Dyer has visited us a few times. We certainly appreciate that, Mayor. Former Mayor Will Sussam stopped in at our last meeting to kind of give us a little update of some of his concerns about the military community. We are always open to having new folks join us and tell us maybe what's on their mind, particularly as it pertains to our military community. It is, you know, important to realize that, you know, we have such a large concentration of military folks, over 89,000 active duty in the city that makes us probably maybe, if not the, not the largest, one of the largest active-duty military populations in the country. Also, we have over 14,000 leaving the active service every year. So it's more than 1,000 a month of our, of these active-duty military members that are transitioning into a civilian career. And we like them to stay here if we can keep them here. So again, that's one of our focus areas. Let's see, next slide. So again, looking at the, at some accomplishments and where we generally spend our time, it has been looking at, again, our economic development opportunities, support engagement with Oceana's Future-Based Design Process has been, you know, one of the things we have formally endorsed with a letter, again, providing that endorsement. I attended the Industry Day back in April of 2022, really a tremendous event. I think many, many positive comments, and I thought, great, great initiative. Again, we, the, our letter supported the non-binding resolution, and we just think that this is a clear win-win for the city and for the Navy as a, as an opportunity for economic development and support to our, to, to, and I guess, Oceana. The Skillbridge Program is a relatively new thing that we, that we were learning about. City of Norfolk has started working with it. We, we signed out a letter asking Virginia Beach to really try to initiate that new program. It is something that, that gives us, and it gives the city an opportunity to bring in service members that are transitioning out of their active-duty career and bring them on before they've actually formally separated from the, from the military. It's called, in Virginia, called the Higher Vets Now Fellowship Program. And, and like I said, we, we really endorse this as a, as a really good opportunity in the, in the area of workforce development and helping transitioning military members. Some of the other things on the accomplishments, I like to highlight the Jones and Caboclo Veteran Care Center, really a great, great, I would say jewel of the City of Virginia Beach now to help veterans that need that type of care. And we, we were all, we've been engaged in supporting that. And then we did start formal meetings with the Norfolk MEAC. So again, Virginia Beach led the way with a MEAC in 2008. Sometime later, City of Norfolk put together a MEAC. I think they saw the success that we were having. And I will say, you know, again, kudos to Virginia Beach for starting it. Norfolk followed. And we, we now meet with them periodically. Our meeting in September this month will be a joint meeting at the Slover Library with the Norfolk MEAC. And one of the benefits of bringing both of us together is that that way, when people like Secretary Crenshaw come in from the governor's office, he can see a more regional picture of what's, of what's going on in the military economic development area. So, so we have, again, started those and consider that to be a good initiative going Also, I mentioned, in the outreach area, we do command briefings, what we call, that's an outreach to go out to the different commands, mostly, of course, Oceana, JEB, Little Creek, Fort Story. We talked to this commanding officers, executive officers, command master chiefs, those that really have their kind of finger on the pulse of what's going on, of course, within the, within the military community, but then also particularly commanding officers and EXOs, a lot of times maybe have some concerns, not really sure how to address those. We give them a way to communicate their concerns to city leaders. And a lot of times, it can be just a matter of a communication issue that they don't know who to call, or they've called and they didn't get to the right person, so they didn't really feel like they got the right answer. So we kind of intervene. We are that, sort of that communication conduit to help, help improve the communications between those command leaders and the city leaders. So we, we went out to Little Creek and Fort Story, met with Captain Mike Witherspoon, his EXO out there, went out to Oceana, and of course, had met with Captain Bob Holmes, commanding officer, and his, his senior staff out there. But the one thing that we did do, which was kind of a new thing, is to, to even improve that communication line, we asked Oceana if they could come and come to our MEAC meeting with their same senior leadership or even others, and we would make, you know, the time on the agenda, we pretty much devote a meeting to them, just talking about their concerns or what they had coming up. Of course, they were very concerned, they were excited about the airshow, and that's coming up this weekend. Hopefully, everybody will be there. Sounds going to be exciting to see the Blue Angels again. But they, they did make an effort to come in and talk to us, and we felt really good about that, that, about that meeting, you know, the issues of transportation and, you know, just different things that they had that we, again, formalized, and we do record those concerns and send them to the city. So, so those are, so those are some of the things that we are accomplishing in helping the communication and the relationships with the Navy and the commands and the leaders in those commands. So, you know, another initiative, so initiatives that we have ongoing throughout the year is engagement with the, at the state level, with Secretary Crenshaw, Secretary of the Veterans in Defense Affairs, Commissioner Daniel Gabe. Again, they've been down to visit us. We are engaging with the Hampton Roads Military and Federal Facilities Alliance, HURUMFA, as a way to just really stay in, in touch with any possible future BRAC issues, anything that's going to affect our facilities. As I mentioned, Craig Quigley was on our MEAC. He has moved on and retired, but, but his deputy, Rick Dwyer, is now taking over as director. So Rick is now coming to our meetings, making his formal reports, and sending us updates from what the, what the folks at HURUMFA are dealing with. And again, we continue our command briefings as a way to continue this relationship because we want to make sure that there's no problem with any of our senior military guys picking up a phone and calling us if they have an issue. We want to have, we want to continue that relationship as people change and, and, and some of the, you know, issues come up with new folks and new commands in the different commands. One of the things we do talk about, we just added this slide, is just an example, when we go out to the command or they come to us, we always spend some time talking about Virginia Beach as a duty station, a place to live, work, serve, play, have fun with your families, and, and a place you really do want to live once you leave active service. So one of the things that we talk about is our, of course, our public and private education, talk about the facilities we have here, talk about our employment opportunities, the growth that's going on in the city, recreational cultural activities. So again, we are out there basically promoting Virginia Beach and selling Virginia Beach as a, as a way to, to help our military families here feel good about staying here and really thinking that this is where they want to spend the rest of their time after military service. And then talking about tangible, tangible city commitment, what the city did to, to really make our, I think, this relationship work so well. In addition to the MEAC, of course, OLEC was a model for the nation, really, of how to deal with encroachment around a naval facility. So that is a tremendous success story. The different military, again, the resources that are available for service members here, we talk about those things that are available. Again, a number of other items there, public education, again, the city is just, has such a great, great school system. I went through it, sent my kids through it. I could talk from a lot of personal experience of how great it is to, to be in Virginia Beach and take advantage of a terrific public education. Let's see, next. All right. What we do here is we generally have, you know, there's a lot of veteran support organizations. A lot of these are doing a lot of good work. They don't always talk to each other. Sometimes there are disconnects. We, one of our efforts in helping, again, veterans, helping our military community is connecting them to these different resources. So for example, the Hampton Roads Workforce Development Council, the Workforce Development Board, Salton Camp, he regularly attends our meetings. We try to connect him to the right folks and the, on the, at these various bases. Again, we just, we support these organizations and we help them get the word out about their initiatives and what they're doing in an outreach to, to the military. And they do have, you know, it's a, a lot of times a matter of just communications and helping in that effort. And then again, exiting military resources, we do provide this information, and when we make the command visits, we make sure that folks in this area do know what's available, and there are some substantial resources available. Okay, so again, I thank you for this opportunity to provide this update on the Military Economic Development Advisory Committee. You know, I, I really do, again, invite you to join us sometime if you'd like to kind of see what we do up close and personal. I do want to thank all those that serve on, that have helped support us that are here today. And subject to your questions, this would conclude my update.
Great, Admiral, thank you. Any questions or concerns or any comments for the, yeah. Yeah, Aaron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one question first. Thank you for your support and your service to our country, all of you, men and women that are here that have served. My question is, so my wife is a professor at Iowa Community College, and so she helps a lot of our military and their family veterans transition, just during the life.
Yes.
One of the things we have talked about was transferable skills. A lot of times, our military, they already come with these great skills, and so trying to lessen the financial burden, number one, from finding a four-year school or two-year school like Community College, but also using those skills, getting, getting them credit for the skills that they already possess. That's something that you are looking at or homing in on, especially from a workforce council developer.
Well, certainly that, yeah, we do, we do, when we bring in, let's say, Salton Camp from, from the Workforce Council, you know, they do really look at that type of counseling. And, you know, when I look at, I mean, we do have TCC on here as one of our resources, the Center for Military and Veterans Education. But yes, you're right, that when there's certificate programs that really do help document the skill levels of service members without getting a degree. But yes, we do recognize that as a challenge, and service members do have considerable skills that, that may not be obvious when you look at their military background, but whether it's organizational, of course, work ethic, management, crisis management, even if they're, you know, like a SEAL Team guy that I used to, I was involved for a while with the Honor Foundation to help SEAL Team members transition. Sure, Bob could talk to this, but they would say, more and more, more stressful than going on an op, on an operation would be, you know, going before a, you know, a hiring committee and explaining what I did, you know, if you're a sniper, you know, how does that relate, you know, jump out of planes, but how does that relate to this job that I'm trying to get? So no, it's, you know, it, and the, one of the Honor Foundation, you know, the Honor Foundation is one of the local organizations that really is helping special forces folks make that transition and translate their resumes and their skill set into civilian jobs. But again, what you point out is, is a great, you know, issue and problem, and it's important to connect those folks to the right people. The Honor Foundation really just works with the special ops community, but there are others. Bob, do you have anything to add to that?
The Honor Foundation is actually at TCC, and they pull people in, they sign up for the commitment. The Honor Foundation is actually funded by the SEAL Foundation, and they made arrangements with a variety of CEOs and companies and arranged interviews with them. So once they sign up that program and are committed to it, the chances are they're going to end up with a job at a large company.
So I wonder, is there something from a policy or accreditation standpoint where it would take two years, maybe three years for them to get a certain accreditation that we can lessen that, they already possess those, those, those skills? And so, Mr. Adams is coming up, I don't know.
If I can grab that one?
Yes, please.
Yes, please.
Councilmember, thank you so much for the question. This is, it's important to note that MEAC partnered with the Workforce Council, is engaged in this issue exactly through the Skillbridge Program that this, that this council participates in. So yes, sir, that act, that, that work is underway, and, and we're working through it as we speak.
Thank you, Mr. Adams.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Mayor, my last question, I'm doing some research and development, and I was recently watching this movie you may have heard of, Top Gun Two. So inquiry minds want to know, can an F-14 take off on a taxiway with its wings fully extended?
Well, we might have a couple guys here, let's see, Admiral Dunlevy or Kit Chop, there might be.
Is that realistic? Going to go all the way? Okay, yeah. So I guess I'd do some more research on that. Okay, all right.
I will tell you, as a sailor, you can't launch a Spinnaker the way Tom Cruise did on that sailboat.
Yeah.
In that wind, I can tell you, I don't know that that's ever been done either.
Thank you, thank you, brother.
All right, okay.
Okay, John Adelcino.
I just want to mention, all ratings in the Navy are cross-referenced on their task to Department of Labor, skill sets that translate to commercial things, that's, and they, a lot of certifications are granted from that. There already is a policy, there's a Navy Command that does all that analysis, does that, and with the Department of Labor for technical skills. So that is out there, so people know that they have that, and they can get that certification and go and work and things that we are very much in short supply of today. But there is a crosswalk between the Department of Labor Commercial and the task list of stuff that go with Navy ratings and at pay grade level.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. And I really, first, and I do want to appreciate all your, all your support to our MEAC. Thank you, Councilman Moss, it's been great to have you as part of our committee. But yes, and, and one of the things you do here, and we see it, again, with all these resources, that there's still, you know, a real need to try to connect folks to, you know, where, if they have that issue, how do you connect them to the right source? And it can get very frustrating because you can hit a lot of dead ends by not knowing kind of where to go, and at some point you give up. So we are trying to help in that regard by giving folks, and actually, that's one thing Mayor Sussam said. He goes, I want to have that one number that I could call to kind of resolve this issue. And we're like, well, we're not there yet. And, you know, we'd love to give you that one number, whatever it might be, or that one website where you could find all the answers, but there are people working on that, but, you know, we're not there yet. Yes, I'm sorry.
Adelcino.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Admiral. I know we read a lot about challenges with mental health and those who have been victims of sexual assault and other issues, and I want to make sure that all of those who serve have the opportunity to heal, and as they enter the workforce and make that transition, are you all involved in that space at all?
You know, we have not, I would say, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I, we have not really taken on that particular, I mean, as part of the transitioning process, as part of connecting them to other resources, there are resources that offer those type of services in our list of many, you know, military resources. But as far as the actual, you know, we have not taken any formal action in support of any type of program like that, but we certainly support those type of programs. We're, we're, we want what's in best, in the best interest of our military community and those serving. So we certainly have, and, and I would say, maybe we take that as, as a good suggestion, and maybe we could look specifically at that area as something, you know, in addition to what we've been working on as far as the workforce piece. But, you know, I appreciate that comment, and think, you know, that is, it's something that we would, you know, we could certainly look into. So I would say, maybe Steve, Charlie, we could add that as one of our, one of our concerns and one of our focus areas going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? One last.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My last question would be, as far as environmental concerns and economic development with the military, are you all looking at that? Is that a discussion that comes up for MEAC, particularly when it comes around flooding in Hampton Roads and our city, as well as our neighboring cities, like Norfolk?
Well, you know, I would say probably more in line with, let's say, you know, issues with now Future-Based Design and Oceana developing the areas around there. I'm sure those kind of environmental concerns are, are clearly, you know, being addressed and have to be addressed as they look to the opportunities for those different land use, you know, program, or land use possibilities. But, so, you know, we are, we certainly, we listen to those, when we go out on our command briefings, if we hear those type of issues, if they have an issue, they want us, the city, to take a look at, a conduit to help look at that. So, you know, thank you.
Thank you. Hey, anyone else? You know, Admiral, I just want to thank you and your tremendous group of folks that you're associated with. I'll tell you what, I think Virginia Beach takes a lot of pride with our relationship that we have with the military community. Admiral Rock, in his, you know, farewell speech, was very complimentary about the relationship with Virginia Beach. As a matter of fact, he conveyed to the manager, myself, that he had every command between here, Chicago, and Virginia Beach was by far the, you know, easiest city to deal with in terms of congeniality and, you know, just working relationships that we've had. You know, you know, let me put it this way, I was just on council when we got put on the BRAC list, and it was definitely a wake-up call. And I'm proud to say, and, you know, Kit Chop's here, that, you know, since then, we've had a seamless continuum of excellence with communication, you know, with the COs of Oceana and, you know, the, the staff, recently, the manager and I, we, we were at the change of command where Admiral Gray took over, and he hosted us for a very good dinner with, you know, the manager and, you know, Taylor, and I went to a Marine Corps chain of command. And the overwhelming thing we're hearing is that how welcome the military and their families are made to feel right here in Virginia Beach. You know, they are the DNA of, you know, what we're about. And I do have a little bit of a running commentary with our dear friend Mayor Alexander, where I say, yeah, you got NATO in Norfolk, but they all live here. And, but, but once again, when you think about all the different organizations we have that truly and honestly complement each other, you know, you know, the manager, you know, we conduct meetings periodically to, you know, with Oceana and Little Creek, you know, you know, to work on joint problems, how could we do this together? How could we do things, you know, cooperatively, you know, in a very, very positive way? And, you know, just, you know, keep this feeling of positivity together. And, you know, and, you know, as a, you know, former Marine Corporal and Aaron did aircraft I worked on are hanging from wires and music, the old Phantom and everything, but, you know, what a privilege it is to be among you. And, you know, recently, I was appointed vice chair of HURUMFA, too. You know, it, it, our military community, as I said, are very, very much of ours. And, you know, you do encourage it, get out to the airshow, see what's here, see, and I'll tell you what, it, it, it's mind-blowing. And, you know, And, you know, the fact is that, you know, Fridays, they bring the STEM students in and, you know, it, the base is open to thousands upon thousands of people. And to let people know that it's your base, too. And, uh, but I'll tell you what, you know, I don't think we can speak highly enough. But the other thing is, let's underscore the fact that you are an essential ingredient to the national defense of our country. And, uh, you know, but once again, those who have, who currently serve and who have served and everything, uh, you know, heartfelt thank you for so many of us.
Well, thank you, and I do thank you for, and all the council for, you know, really the service that you, uh, that you have for this city, the love for this city. I, it's, it's a, it's a, you know, when you go out and you talk to the military commands, it's easy to kind of sell, again, talk about what a great place Virginia Beach is, and that's in large measure because we have such a great city council that, that really, really serves this community and the city. And as, again, as a, as a lifetime resident, I sincerely appreciate what's happened since 2005, and I'm just glad, again, to be supporting this, uh, this initiative with our relationships with the Navy. But again, thank you for what you do for this city. It's, it's really been, it's such, so, it's been so successful, I honestly think, whether it was OLEC or, you know, now what's happened with MEACs, you know, we, we've kind of set a standard that, uh, it's really, people around the country have noticed. I know people used to often talk about it, how this area was recognized, or the relationships that we have with our military. And, um, so, again, thank you for what you do.
Hey, appreciate it, thank you. Okay, Mr. DeHandy, you have a few, uh, briefings for us.
Mr. Mayor, at this time, Dr. Caleb Padati, our Virginia Beach Health District Directors, is going to come and give council a quarterly update as it relates to public health in Virginia Beach.
Thank you so much. So, I don't have any questions for you all today. I thought what I would do is just talk through our top of mind as we start to move into the fall for public health. So, those three topics are going to be COVID, flu, and monkeypox. But certainly, as I move along, if there are questions or things that I can clarify or anything additionally you need, please don't hesitate to, to interrupt. So, starting with COVID, um, right now, as I'm sure you're all well aware, our COVID virus activity level here in Virginia Beach is low. And that's a good thing, although as I'm sure you all have heard over the past couple of years, we've really seen the virus activity for COVID go up and down at different points throughout the response. And so, what I can tell you is that from a public health and epidemiologic perspective, we're increasingly seeing COVID as a seasonal respiratory virus pattern. And that makes sense because that's similar to the other viruses in the coronavirus family. It's similar to how we know this virus is transmitted from one person to another by respiratory secretions. So, I mention that now because I think that, again, it's great that virus activity is low right now, but I do think it's likely that we'll see an increase in the fall and winter months as it starts to look more like some of those other respiratory illnesses. So, that means that when we're in close proximity to each other, right, indoors, it's colder weather, there's more opportunities for respiratory viruses like COVID to spread. And that is exactly why now is the perfect time to take advantage of those COVID vaccines. So, I'm sure you all have heard, um, very recently, that there has been an updated COVID vaccine that has become available. And this vaccine for this season is actually targeting, um, the BA4 and BA5 sub-variants of the Omicron strain that have been circulating more recently, and so therefore are responsible for more of the more recent virus activity. So, that makes a lot of sense, right? And that probably sounds like some other viruses that we'll talk about in a minute here, flu, right, in terms of updating a vaccine to better reflect what's circulating. So, that vaccine that I just, just mentioned, um, there's two of them, um, through Moderna and Pfizer. They are both issued in the U.A. They've both been approved by the AICIP or Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices at CDC, and they're both available now in Virginia and, of course, here in Virginia Beach. So, we have already started offering those boosters, and the recommendation now is that anybody 12 years and older receive that updated strain booster if it's been at least two months since they completed a primary series or a booster. So, again, I know there have been a lot of evolutions in how we've offered vaccine over time, but to be clear, this updated recommendation is for the new vaccine that better addresses the circulating strains. And the recommendation is that everybody who has had a primary series at least two months ago or a booster, who is 12 years and older, take advantage of that. And again, you can do that here in Virginia Beach, um, and probably the easiest way is by going to vaccinate.virginia.gov or to our Virginia Beach Health Department website, and you'll find a link there where you can click on it and find the appointments and availability near you. And again, that vaccine, that updated vaccine against those circulating strains is going to be incredibly important to help us keep virus activity low for the fall and winter and help protect those among us who are most vulnerable and most at risk of bad outcomes. Sure?
Can you repeat the website again, please?
Yeah, vaccinate.virginia.gov. You can also go to VASE, V-A-S-E dot VDH dot virginia.gov, although I know that one's a little bit more complicated, I apologize. But those links are available just through the Virginia Beach Department of Public Health website, um, and you can click on them and sign up for an appointment. Absolutely. Any other questions about COVID?
Good to go.
Okay, we can move to influenza. So, um, again, I mentioned, um, certainly not the same virus by any means, but I'm sure you're starting to see some similarities between the public health and medical approach to flu and COVID. And that's because we're in a better place than we were two years ago, we've got more tools. But, as we all know, just like COVID is still a serious illness, flu is still very much a serious virus that unfortunately circulates in our communities every year and unfortunately can cause serious illness and even death in people every year. Again, which is why now is a great time to take advantage of the preventive tools that we have available, and that is vaccine. So, um, again, you'll start to see in your communities, and, you know, we would encourage everybody, whether it's your doctor's office, pharmacies, public health, or any place that's easy for you, um, to take advantage of that flu vaccine. That's going to go a long way to helping protect yourself and your family, particularly because we do know that there were some signals from the southern hemisphere season that there was some pretty strong flu virus activity. So, we would really encourage everybody to take advantage of that flu vaccine as well. Um, and ideally, you know, often we get asked about ideal timing for that. Ideally, somewhere around October is generally when we say that's a good time to plan to get your flu shot. And we say that because, just like learning anything else, it takes your immune system a little bit of time to learn to fight something, so you want to give it about two to four weeks before it would have to fight that virus off. And so, again, we say somewhere around October would be ideal. So, for anybody who is not yet thinking about it, you know, start looking out for where you might be able to access flu vaccine near you and planning for getting that vaccine here in the next month or so. Any questions about?
Questions on that? Well, you're doing good.
That's great, and so that means we're all going to get our vaccines, I am very excited. We can keep moving along. Um, so, um, the last topic that I wanted to cover for you all this afternoon is monkeypox. So, I think the last time I was here with you all was back in June, and we were just starting to talk about, um, this reemergence of this virus. Again, a member of the orthopox virus family that is not new, but has definitely reemerged globally, um, in a new way. And so, of course, over the past several months, what we've seen is an increase, unfortunately, in those cases globally, over 57,000, um, in the United States, over 21,000. And here in the state of Virginia, we're at 409 with 21 of those cases, uh, in Virginia Beach. So, this virus, again, um, is one that moves between us with close skin-to-skin contact and can cause rash, fever, um, and some swollen nodes. Now, when people are diagnosed with this illness, this is, again, an example of the kind of illness that public health gets notified about and that we follow up on, and we do that really for two reasons. One is, we want to better understand how we can support affected individuals and how they may have been exposed. But the other is because we want to reach out to anybody who may have had close contact with that individual, regardless of who they are or what the contact is, because we can offer them vaccine. So, we do have an FDA-approved vaccine against monkeypox that can lower the likelihood that somebody who's been exposed will then go on to develop monkeypox. And so, that's the group that we've been targeting with vaccines. So, that's people who have had an exposure or who are more likely to have had an exposure. And so, as we've seen vaccine supply expand, you've seen us, um, expand our offerings of this vaccine here over the past several months, and the Virginia Beach Health Department has offered over 2,600 monkeypox shots over the past several months. And we continue to make that available for our community, and you can access that, again, through those same links that I mentioned. So, directing people to check that webpage and visit that link is a way that you can make sure that you can make that appointment, um, it'll ask you a couple of questions, and then you can go ahead and, and take advantage of that preventive tool. Now, again, the overall risk for our community for monkeypox is low, but there are some people who are at greater risk, and those are the groups that we really want to make sure we're supporting with this, making sure that we're offering them that preventive tool and keeping everybody up to date and informed on what's going on. And so, I think that concludes my remarks on monkeypox.
Hey, anybody, Michael?
Good afternoon, Dr. Padatis, nice to see you. Thank you for being here. I have a follow-up question about, um, some of your comments about monkeypox. First, I just want to thank you for being here and, and thank you for sharing that information and for the really remarkable work that you and your team have done to address that concern, as well as the others that you addressed in our community. I think one of the reasons that you and I have, that I reached out to you many months ago and that we've been in communication since then is because historically, um, diseases that have impacted LGBTQ plus have been, um, under, um, under, uh, resource? The responses have been under-resourced, they've been unremarkable, and, um, and they've been, uh, unfortunately unfair to members of our community who are different. And so, uh, it's my goal, and I think, I know, I know you share it and the manager shares it, to make sure that we don't find ourselves in that position with this particular situation, and I don't think we have. There's a lot of uncertainty around monkeypox and who should be vaccinated, what it is, how do you catch it? And I think the, um, public relations efforts that you have made, as well as the strategic outreach efforts, have made a real difference in our community and about raising awareness and, and lowering the risk for people. So, I very much appreciate that. I want to ask you about, a little bit about the sort of state's coordination in Hampton Roads, because I've noticed that the Virginia Beach Department of Health, your agency, has taken a lead regionally, and, um, people I know who live in Norfolk, who live in other areas are looking to Virginia Beach for access to the vaccine or for information. And is that a coordinated effort? I'm just wondering if you could share with me why that is. I'm happy for it, I have no, there's no regional, uh, competition here, but I, I'm just curious what that's about and if you could provide some insight there.
Absolutely. So, of course, you know, we are one of the 35 districts that belong to VDH and make up the different community health districts across the state, right? And so, we work in very close collaboration, um, with the state and with our neighbors. And I think it's actually a really great example of a place where, um, we may be differently resourced and we may have different needs at different times, right? And so, when this arose as a public health concern, there was absolutely no hesitation. You know, I can tell you, um, collaborating with our neighbors and making sure that if there was anybody who we needed to support in our community, we were doing that. And I can tell you, that's the same approach that we would take to any other public health issue.
Just, just more specifically, so, if there's a, the Norfolk Department of Public Health, do they, are they offering vaccines?
Yeah, so, each different health department has kind of come up with a different, um, plan based on their resources and capabilities for how to administer and share and sign people up. You've probably seen or maybe heard about different approaches from different districts, really across the state of Virginia. And again, we really do try to coordinate because we're all a part of VDH and be as consistent as we can, um, both to maximize effectiveness and also to make things as clear for people as possible, right? So that you're not having to figure out a new system when you move from one place to another. But yes, you know, Norfolk offers, um, some vaccine, there are other health departments, and again, I, I wouldn't want to speak on behalf of them since I don't know all of their intricate details, but, um, you know, other districts are certainly offering vaccine. But you're absolutely right, in Virginia Beach, we have made it a point to make sure that we are doing absolutely everything we can to support, um, our community, which includes people who may be visiting Virginia Beach, um, you know, or, or regionally participating in our activities or other things.
I appreciate that very much. I mean, not to belabor the point, but if, you know, the, the memory of the AIDS crisis lives fresh in many people's minds, and many people suffered and died, I hope that people aren't dying as a result of the disease, but suffer because of who they are and because the government was slow to respond. And so, it's a priority of mine to make sure that people don't have to live through that again, to the extent that, um, that I can influence that, I take that responsibility very seriously. And I think the work that you and your team are doing is really, um, in the city of Virginia Beach, and I know Ms. Russell is here, and she's worked on this, and Ms. Johani are all working together to make sure that we don't find ourselves in that situation again, and that's a, I think that's a bright spot, and it's very much appreciated, so thank you.
Thank you. Delcino and then, uh, Mr. Mayor.
Really, just sort of a segue from that, again, thank you for all your hard work. You, I know we say, we always mention the term vulnerable communities, really want to give you this opportunity, um, to share with the public your efforts with outreach to reach those and how you define them, whether it's homeless, whether it's those who are low-income or minority or, or others that may not have access to this website.
All of those, you are absolutely right.
So, just giving an opportunity to share with the public the, the efforts that you go through to make sure we reach those who are a little tougher to reach.
Thank you, and you are absolutely right, and I would say it includes all of those groups. Um, and I would also say that sometimes there are vulnerabilities that aren't as apparent as others, and there are vulnerabilities that are experienced differently depending on the health concern we're talking about, right? Um, and so, you're absolutely right, you know, making sure that we're proactively reaching out to the groups who are being most impacted, regardless of who they are or what they look like or where they are, right, is incredibly important, and it's something that I think we can do better. I can tell you that I think we learned how to do things a little bit better through COVID. COVID was incredibly challenging, of course, for a lot of reasons, but it taught us that public health can really serve as a good bridge between the community and healthcare, right? And it's exactly through what you just mentioned, that really proactive, hands-on, talking to somebody kind of outreach. Um, and for monkeypox, for example, I can tell you that a lot of that early outreach was done through phone calls, by visiting people in their communities, by, you know, going in-person, right, to have conversations about a topic that may be sensitive and that for many may, you know, mirror, uh, challenging experiences of decades past. But I will tell you that there are always opportunities for us to do that better, and that is absolutely a priority of the Health Department.
I stand with, uh, Councilman, um, Rulucci, the same thing, to, to reach those who are a little bit tougher, where technology is not the first mode of communication, whether they're elderly or ESL, which is second language, any of those, be happy to step up and help.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Good afternoon, and, uh, thank you so much for the update. I also want to thank you, because I didn't get a chance to follow up with you, but there was a young man who contacted me, and he was trying to get the monkeypox vaccination, and so you were very prompt at addressing his concerns, and you, um, uh, supported him and helped him through what he was going through, so thank you for doing that. He was, you know, a bit concerned, and it's always good to reach out to, uh, individuals, reach out to staff and others, and they address it right away. I really appreciate you doing that.
If I could, um, that is just a great connection of the incredible team that we have at the Health Department.
Absolutely.
And so, I so appreciate that you made that connection, um, but it's really a credit to them, not to me. Thank you.
I appreciate you doing that. It is, it is good to have a good team with you for what you do, and the team as well. I want to ask about, um, and you probably may be aware, about correspondence that I received and I'm sure other members of the body received as well pertaining to, um, it's the National Initiative to Address COVID-19 Health Disparities Among Populations at High Risk and the Under served. And so, a letter was sent out, uh, yesterday, uh, by a gentleman by the name of William Tyree, who is, um, a faith-based leader. It was signed the Faith-Based Community Leaders of Hampton Roads, so there are other individuals who are included. I know in the very beginning, when you talked about, um, working with Kate Meecham and, um, this initiative and reaching out and reaching out to the community, and I remember talking about how I would be supportive and help, and I did, you know, talk with both of you all, and it was a very good meeting. And the other day I was thinking about following up with you. So this letter sparked that follow-up. I would also say, what also caught my attention is I've worked with individuals who are addressing disparities in the minority and underserved communities. And so they are trying to make sure that they get the attention and the support and the funding that they need. So here in this specific, I made a note so I make sure I get it right, this specific correspondence, they were asking about the follow-up from Ms. Meacham meeting them and talking about the initial grant, the funding. And then specifically, they were concerned that she didn't follow up and participate in, you know, outreach events and that, and that sort. So those items were brought up. And then what really is at the helm of this issue is the funding. And they are concerned if they are going to receive it because they haven't been able to do so. So I know, I don't want to just kind of like throw all of that at you. I know it's going to take some time to kind of look that information up, maybe review, but I am interested in getting to the crux of the matter. They have asked for an investigation as well. And an investigation is good because it shows what's been done. So if there's no issue, then we see what has been done. If it's not, if there is an issue, then we see how we can address it. So I would like to, and I've talked with the city manager about having a special session to go into what's, what's happened, the data, where did the funding go? Because they are concerned that if that funding is not used, it's going to roll over into a nonprofit and they won't be able to tap into those resources. So I guess my, my, those are their requests. I would like to see how we move forward with this. Is this, is that through the investigation, perhaps, I don't know, an audit to find out where the funds went? But, but we do need to address this matter with data, with what's been done, so that we can take that information to them and address it. Because they're asking for some other things that are more, I'd say, you know, it would probably be, well, we want to see what we can do first before we talk about the other, going to the extreme of releasing people and, and so forth. And so I guess, how do we move forward with that? And how can I help? Because I told you in the beginning, I want it to be more supportive and help. And so I do want to do that, and I do want to address their concerns.
Yeah, and thank you, Councilwoman. You know, Kate and I so appreciated the meeting we had with you and your continued offers of support. I think that's really important, not just for this, right, but for any public health topic of concern for our communities. So thank you for that. Absolutely, certainly, we're always happy to sort of have a follow-up conversation. As you well know from your experiences with her as well, Kate has been an incredible asset for the Health Department. We are so fortunate that we were able to have her assistance on this project. And we're actually getting close to being able to do an updated work plan, as well as request what's called a no-cost extension through the CDC. So recall that these are federal funds that came directly to the Health Department from the CDC. And they offer you an opportunity to continue the great work without having that deadline, which would have been upcoming of July 2023. So it's a great opportunity, as we get that information together, for us to share more about the plans for how to use that. We continue to work incredibly closely with our colleagues at CDC, of course, with VDH, who received similar funding across districts for the rest of Virginia, and of course with other jurisdictions who have received similar funding. But I think I mentioned at our last, you know, the last time I was here, it brings up another really important piece of public health, which is infrastructure, right? So this is still a grant, it is still time-limited, and we are really excited about the work that we're going to be able to do. But in order to sustain good work, we really need a lasting investment in public health infrastructure and in the kinds of things that our community needs. So I think this is actually a really great opportunity for us to talk more about that work and what those needs look like for Virginia Beach moving forward.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And then, I know Councilmember Ross has, wants to respond, but also with Mr. Duhaney, in terms of getting that, that data and that information, looking into these concerns, the best way to go about it, a session for this specific issue to get that data, to get that information out there, because it was sent to the whole body.
So this will, that'll be up to council, if council desires that, we can coordinate with Dr. Padadi to see to what extent the Health Department wants to bring that information forward to present to council.
And so if I'm requesting that it be put on the agenda, can we do that?
I would request to see if Dr. Padadi is able to accommodate that request.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I'd like to do that. And then from then on, in terms of an investigation, which is what they're asking for, how do you go to or do that investigation? Would that be through an audit? How would that, how would that work?
Councilwoman Wooton, funding didn't come through the city. The funding went from the federal government to the Virginia Department of Health, which then went to their sub-entity, the Virginia Beach Department of Health, Public Health. So I don't think we have jurisdiction to investigate the state.
No, sir. That's not what I'm asking. What I'm asking is, how do we determine what has happened in terms of the community? What were the steps that were taken here, in our purview, not the state, in our purview? Where we, you know, where that initial meeting took place and sat down and talked with the community leaders, then what transpired? That's what we're looking for. That's what they're looking for. And so what, what, how do we find out the update information in terms of our purview when it came to us? Then what happened?
Yeah, I'll follow up with you after the fact. I'm not clear, because the city does not have a grant for health equity. The grant's with the Virginia Beach Department of Public Health. So this, Dr. Padadi's team would have to provide that update.
And that's what I want.
I think Dr. Padadi said that she's amenable to that if council wants her on the agenda.
Okay. But what I was asking separately, in terms of investigating it, if that's not sufficient, then what can we do? Because, you know, because, you know, oftentimes, these groups, and they're concerned, if they don't receive the information that they want, then they go to the media and other avenues. So I would like to make sure we address this in-house before it gets to that level. So being proactive instead of reactive, there are things we can do to make sure we address that. That's my concern.
Understood.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Ms. Henley, and then Aaron.
On the same email that she was just referring to, in looking at the funds that were to come, I noticed that underserved communities, including rural areas, and you and I've had a conversation about that. I know during the first year of the pandemic with the shots, I had a very hard time ever getting a couple of, and there were a couple finally, of the sessions down in the rural area. People had to come all the way up to town to get the vaccine. But since that first area, that first year with the boosters and everything, there hasn't been a single one in the rural area. And you and I talked about the fact that in our rural area, which is pretty extensive, we don't have transportation, and many people who need services not only cannot get to them because of the distance of the, but also because of the fact that they, that there's no public transportation. So we do need to start looking at a way to, not only because of this funding or anything, but to start remembering that there is a large community of people in the rural area who really don't have the health services. And I hope that it won't be so difficult, but there hasn't been a single session of giving the vaccine in the last two years of, in the rural area.
I'm so glad you mentioned that. It's really, I can tell you, part of that is because recognizing the needs in that population, our approach has been to try and do one-on-one outreach. So taking either some of our volunteers or even sometimes partnering with EMS to send people out as there are individuals.
Oh, my God, it was the EMS.
And as recently as today, I can tell you, our outreach team, which includes members of the grant team under Kate, are working to do that targeted, really phone proactive outreach in light of the new bivalent booster.
So absolutely, and importantly, could not agree with you more, and we're going to keep doing some of that really proactive outreach to bring the resources to people who may not otherwise have easy access to.
Thank you.
Okay, Aaron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to be clear, so that I'm clear in all understanding was, we're talking about the Health Equity Grant? And are we, is, are we talking about $3.35 million?
Yes.
Okay, and so I believe what I'm understanding here is that, will you be able to, since like you were, I guess, alluding to that, break that down to how that is being utilized in the city of Virginia Beach?
Yeah.
Where you're going to get information from us?
I have no problem providing that information.
Very good.
So what we've done over the course of receiving that grant, there's been about 15% of it that's been spent down, which is a relatively small amount. And if you look nationally at others who receive the same award, that's actually pretty consistent. And there's a couple of reasons for that. One of the big ones, though, which makes a lot of sense, the pandemic is not the same today as it was two years ago, right? And so our communities' needs are a little different, and so we've had to update that plan, which again is why I mentioned we'll be providing an updated work plan, requesting that no-cost extension to continue the work. But I'm happy to give those kinds of updates.
Thank you. And last but certainly not least, in that letter, it was highly inflammatory for one of our staff members, Dr. Ken Chandler. I think he serves our community very, very well. This is my time on coming on council, he's done an excellent job. He's gone above and out his way to provide all the information that we need to respond, very, very fast in a manner to, 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 his professional, his professional, just work has just been exemplary in the way he conducts himself. And so, you know, again, I don't know anyone else's experiences is, but I know Dr. Ken Chandler has been a great addition to our city, to our community, and has done a lot of great work. That, you know, goes without saying, I can't do much to help those cowboys at all, you know, but beyond that, I am proud and happy to have him part of our city and proud to work with him. So thank you, Dr. Chandler, for all the work that you do.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else at this point?
You know, if I, you know, if I could just, you know, make a comment, I was going to make a comment during our council comments in a bit, but this past weekend, I was invited to, you know, go visit our friends in Norfolk to speak at the Ryan White Foundation Dinner. And this is a group that has been working for years on HIV and AIDS patients. And, you know, I was one of the speakers, and when AIDS broke out in the early 1980s, I was working at the Israel Medical Center in New Jersey, and it was pretty much a death sentence back then. And there was a lot of fear, you know, a lot of people, even in the healthcare professions, were afraid of contagiousness of it and the perceptions of it and everything like that. And I think a lot of the thing, and we had a remarkable physician talk about the progress that we have made over time. And I think if we look at our public health and you look at the complexities of public health and what has to be done to keep massive populations healthy over time, whether it be with COVID, whether it be HIV or influenza, or any one of the number of things that are out there, you know, that is a remarkable challenge that public health officials have. It goes to quality drinking water, it goes to lead pipes. I mean, you know, it's, there's a lot of stuff out there you got to deal with. But I was, you know, heartened by the fact that, you know, people like Jervin Lee, you know, partnered with Riverside Medical Group, and, and they honor the people and the caretakers. And, you know, one of the gentlemen that spoke, you know, has been carrying the HIV and AIDS virus for, I think he said 30 years. And, you know, but the thing is, you know, we're dealing with the problems. Will there be an occasional glitch that comes up or, you know, things of that nature? But when you look at the magnitude of the challenge that we have on so many fronts, you know, you know, I think, you know, Sberner Wooton and Aaron bring up some very, very valid points that, you know, have to be addressed for a lot of reasons. But, but once again, I just wanted to personally thank you and, you know, all your colleagues from around. From what I understand, the foundation where I was at is a multi-city approach of which we're involved, correct? So, you know, good on you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Duhaney, I think we got a superstar coming.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, you're Legislative Affairs Director, Devin Wright, going to come and give council an update on the first initial drafting of your legislative package for your further review and consideration.
Today, I'm going to provide you a snapshot of the requests that have been received so far from city departments, from some of you and from some of your council-appointed committees and commissions. And then I'm also going to give you a glimpse of what we expect to be introduced by the governor in his governor-led initiatives, and then items from last year that we expect will be reviewed. First, in order to formulate your legislative package, this is a timeline that I expect we're probably going to follow with your approval, of course. Many of the items that will be in the, reviewed in your Friday package, but I also received in the past day, a few more requests that I'm going to mention to you. You'll notice that we have two months from today to refine the package so that it accurately reflects your legislative agenda. The schedule will give us enough time to secure patrons and educate our delegation on the items, so that when you send me to Richmond in January, I can hit the ground running. Okay, so today we have our workshop. In two weeks from today, we plan on another workshop, which in the meantime, we can start refining these items, and I expect that I'll probably be reaching out to each of you for items that you are interested in putting forward. On our 10/18, we will have our formal session for public comment, and then post-elections, that's our first meeting post-election, that's on 11/15, where we'll adopt the legislative package. Okay, so here's the pre-filing schedule. It's a practical matter, once you adopt your legislative package with the projected date of November 15th, there's an intervening Thanksgiving holiday there, so we'll have a short window to shop the bills to our delegates and have them put it into the Department of Legislative Services for drafting. Then we'll start seeing the bills drop probably around December 1st and throughout December. Wednesday, January 11th, starts the legislative session. It's an odd-numbered year, so we only have a 45-day session this year. So hopefully we'll be all done and have it wrapped up by February 24th. I'm flattered, too. We're going to try. The Senate Rules Committee met last week on Wednesday, September 7th, and they established their bill limits. If you recall, during COVID, we had much shorter or less bill, the bill limits were much smaller. This year, for all practical purposes, the senators will each have, be allowed 26 bills for introduction, and if you do the math on that, times 40 senators. And if you do the math on that, times 40 senators, that's 1,040 Senate bills. The House Rules Committee hasn't established theirs yet, but as you know, there's 100 House members. So if each of them are allotted 26 bills, that's another 2,600 bills for a total of somewhere around 3,640 bills. I don't expect that the House will probably have a 26-bill limit, but you never know. The main takeaway here is that the bill limits can impact the availability of patrons that we have and their willingness to carry bills. As you recall, during COVID, when they had like 15-bill limits, they would say, oh, I don't have any more room. So this year, for better or for worse, we may have plenty of room. Oops, sorry. Okay. We'll start with several of the requests to amend the Constitution, then we have the City Charter, and then the Virginia Code. So as you know, the right to marry for same-sex couples has been protected in Virginia since 2015 with the Obergefell case. And the issue here, and this had come up two years in a row, and it will be coming back this year. Currently, the right to marry would not be protected in Virginia if the U.S. Supreme Court were to overturn that Obergefell case because our Virginia Constitution in Article 1, Section 15A states that marriage is only between one man and one woman. So our Virginia Human Rights Commission would like to either change that wording to either two consenting adults or get rid of this code section altogether. They would like to see either repeal or a change. The next one, we have one city charter amendment that was requested by Mr. Moss. Currently, when a vacancy occurs in a local governing body, the remaining members of the body or the board have 45 days to appoint a qualified voter to fill the vacancy. And the current process is what you used recently to appoint Councilmember Miles, and not you, Catherine Miles. But if this were adopted, this process would no longer exist. And Section 3.3, 3.03 of the Virginia Beach Charter would be amended, and all interim vacancies of city council members and the mayor would be filled by special election. Next, we have requests to amend the Virginia Code. This is from last year, and it's going to be coming back this year. In 2023, this was initiated by Councilmember Tower and the House of Delegates by Delegate Angela Williams-Graves. It was House Bill 980. The purpose of the amendment was to allow for the name, telephone numbers, and email addresses to remain anonymous for people who reported housing code violations such as this. Right now, residents who report zoning code violations can remain anonymous, but not those for nuisance. The subcommittee that was assigned this during the session recommended that this bill be taken up by the FOIA Council. This ended up being the only bill that the FOIA Council did take up this year. Our Housing Code Administrator, Wells Fried, and myself, and one of the code supervisors, RJ Mattis, we got together in July with Delegate Williams-Grave, and we went up to Richmond, and we met with the subcommittee. We had a lot of support from VML and VACO. And VACO, their general counsel, gave some really compelling testimony about this. What ended up happening is the subcommittee is looking to recommend adoption with several changes. They may pick and choose which ones they decide that we can keep private. They, their concern mainly is for abuse, that people may make complaints that aren't warranted. So this is going to have to be reintroduced by Delegate Williams-Graves, and we'll see what the FOIA Council says. We're waiting for the full, full FOIA Council to meet. So this one doesn't even require a sponsor this year. It will just automatically come up. Okay, the next one is a code change that again was requested by Councilmember Moss. As you know, in 2022, the General Assembly exempted the full 1.5% of the state grocery tax, but they left intact the 1% local option. This amendment would allow, enable the city council to adopt an ordinance that would exempt food purchase for human consumption and also essential personal hygiene products from the local retail sales and use tax. So we know that the governor has already been working on this, and several delegates and senators have said they will be back with this next year. So this is definitely going to be on the forefront. And the, the question is, VML has also taken a position on this, their position being that they don't oppose it, and they're in support as long as the 1% is somehow more made whole. That's a policy decision. And in, in addition to that, this, the question here would be whether or not you want us to find someone to carry this as a bill or whether we want to make a policy statement and sign on to the governor's. So that will remain to be seen. For now, we will just take it as, as a code change. Okay, the next one is interesting. This item was requested by Parks and Rec. And the first one's a picture of our city-owned playground at 31st Street, and the second one is Kids Cove at Mount Trashmore. We have a lot of beautiful parks and recreational equipment throughout the city, and it looks like fun and easy, but apparently there is a glitch in our procurement process, not ours, the state's, that doesn't allow for cooperative procurement for both A and E and then also for installation. This is apparently a problem, I'm told, because of the way the installation needs to be done. And I'm sure some of our professionals out here can explain this better, but basically what this would do would include playground installations in an option for co-op procurement for the concept planning and assembly drawings, as well as purchase of materials, equipment, and then the installation and assembly. So bottom line is, it would make the procurement process for all of these much more streamlined. Okay. This was requested by Economic Development. That's inside of a data center. And that, the next one there is our corporate landing park, where we currently have, I'll call it two and a half data centers, because Point 1 is still under construction. There was a state code provision that exempted from taxation any equipment that was leased or purchased for use in data centers. This has a sunset provision, and yes, the sunset provision is 12 years away. It's in 2035. So this doesn't sound like it's, you know, urgent. However, Economic Development has spoken to several of the data centers, ones that they want to also lure here. And apparently, this is important for them because they need to have certainty as far as whether or not they would like to locate in Virginia, because the equipment is very expensive. And when it reaches obsolescence, they want to make sure that this incentive is going to remain. Okay, the next one is another code change, which would enable localities to impose a discretionary curfew. Apparently, at this point, there's two schools of thought, of legal thought, as to whether or not a locality can impose a discretionary curfew, which is not related to age and also not related to public emergency, such as we had during COVID. What this request would do would be to seek clarification in the law or to add a state law provision that would enable the localities to adopt an ordinance that would impose a discretionary curfew. Okay. This one was requested by our Planning Departments, Permits and Inspections. Current law requires that new employees that issue permits, whether it be building permit or a, any, any kind of permit, must have at least three years of experience and undergo a certification process per our Virginia Construction Code. The Virginia Construction Code is only updated every three years, and apparently it was already updated in 2021, so we are off-cycle, and the next one won't be done till 2024. So what this request would do would have the General Assembly direct the overseeing agency, which is DHCD, Department of Environmental Development, to immediately suspend this requirement, even if temporarily. And what this would do, because these are very difficult positions to fill, and apparently they're even more difficult when you have to have these kind of requirements. So what they would like is a temporary suspension of this requirement so they could widen the pool of potential candidates during this hiring crisis. These two are add-ons that I just received today, so they were not in your Friday package. But I am told that Councilmembers Rouse and Miles are familiar with these two items and that likely if they move forward, you, you may be our sponsors. The first request would align statutory requirements for posting professional service solicitations to be the same as construction. And basically, what that would do would be to get rid of the requirement that it be published in the newspaper or it could just be posted on the city's website. And then the second request would clarify the bond amounts for certain construction contracts, which would remove one of the barriers to participation by SWAM businesses. Okay. And this next one, these four items, I also just received today, and these were requested by the RAC. And so I still have to do a little more investigation on them, but I wanted to mention them to you so that you were all aware. I'm told that Councilmembers Branch, Tower, and Miles are familiar with these items. They all like to tell us who's, who's on board and likely, if any move forward, may be our sponsors. So the first request is a repeat from last year, and it failed to gain a lot of traction. This is the one where they were concerned about businesses putting their wares out on the sidewalk in the right-of-way. The reason it didn't get much traction is really because it was, they didn't want any increase in civil penalties or to take any civil penalty and make it a criminal matter. So we'll have to look at that one a little bit more deeply. The second item you'll see on the next few slides, the cannabis-related concerns. And I have that listed as one of your policy statements. So I think that's aligned with something you may already want to do. Tax on vaping products, that is another one that, what I'm assuming they're asking for there is enabling legislation for a local tax. In 2020, the General Assembly approved a statewide tax on, is that correct? Okay. There's a liquid nicotine or vape juice tax of 6.6% at the state level. And I'm assuming, again, I don't have to assume because Mr. Tower just confirmed that what they're asking for is a local tax, an excise tax on these products. And then the fourth one is self-explanatory, they would like some money for parking development within the resort area.
Sabrina.
I just, I, I know you mentioned number two. I have had some folks reach out to me about those concerns because there's a little, few blurred lines there, and people want to know how to operate, especially in the city, on how to, you know, to move forward. So I am happy to sponsor that.
Okay, they're, and so you're going to talk a little bit more about the cannabis-related concerns, because as you know, last year, it would have had to been reenacted, and it wasn't. So it's probably going to all come back this year, so.
And I know you mentioned you, if any of us wanted to sponsor that, so I wanted to make sure you knew.
Thank you.
I'm supportive of that.
Very good. Okay. Next, I just have a few policy statements. These aren't specific things, but basically, last week when we met, Mrs. Henley mentioned that you'd like to see the current state and regional resiliency items be supported in your legislative agenda. Basically, these are the main ones that have been, have, have been regionally and citywide that have been, come up, that are things that you might want to support. The one that I really want to call your attention to is the last one, which is the continued support of and the participation in REGI, which is the Regional Greenhouse Gas Initiative. And I'm sure you've all heard about this, it's very controversial. The last Thursday, 61 Virginia Democrats, which is more than a third of the General Assembly, signed on to a letter that was addressed to the state's Air Pollution Control Board, and they were opposing Governor Youngkin's proposed regulatory route to remove us from REGI. So, and that happened after August 31st, Travis Boiles, who is the Acting Secretary of Natural and Historic Resources, he outlined that the administration was going to take an administrative route to get us out of REGI. As of right now, we're still in, but we're not distributing any of the money. I did want to just mention to you that so far, there's been two rounds of REGI, and we are currently applied for the third round, but it's kind of been held up because of this. City did already receive $4.9 million of REGI funds from the Community Flood Protection Fund. We received $3 million for the Elizabeth River Project. We received 1.9 for C-TAC. And currently, we have 6.7 million that's pending in round three for First Colonial Ocean Boulevard project and 1.7 million for Marsh Terrace, 1.7 for First Colonial, 5 million for Marsh Terrace, excuse me. So even though these awards were supposed to be made in May, they're all just kind of backed up, and nothing's been given out based on the outcome of REGI. So you may, whatever position you may want to take, that would be a good one.
Mr. Moss.
Can I get a copy of, of the JLS study and also the HRSV climate resilience study, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We need more reading material.
Okay, great. Okay. We have one more, another policy statement that was requested by the Virginia Beach Human Rights Commission. As you know, the Supreme Court overturned Roe v. Wade on June 24th, 2022, and they held that there was no longer a federal constitutional right to an abortion, and the commission would like the current Virginia law to remain unchanged. And we know that will also be coming under attack and will be requested change. So that was their request. Here's the policy statement that I had brought up even prior to the RAC bringing it up. A couple of years, a couple of years, a couple of weeks ago, I sent you all a cannabis-related information, and it was a result of Norfolk putting forth some preemptive kind of parameters. It's really kind of too soon to do anything because nothing is going on, but we do know that there's going to be bills that are going to be reintroduced this year. The main ones, I would say, would be the local option referendum if localities wanted to opt out, an expanded taxation for localities that we just talked about, you know, a little bit for cannabis and just like the vaping and all of those. Liberal local ordinance and zoning authority. VML and VACO are both pushing for the ability to have as much local authority as we can on the placement of where the dispensaries will be, the placement in, in, you know, proximity to schools and things like that. And then we also want a statutory role for localities in the licensing process. Say, we want, these are things that were already put forward. You have to decide what it is that you would like for us to do. As you know, there's already Cannabis Control Authority in several different committees that have been formed. It is in an absolute state of flux. So the best thing would be to come up with what your policies are, and then we can work it from there. And as individual bills come up, I can bring them forward to you, and we can decide.
Sabrina, can I ask you what expertise we have, if any, on staff in terms of cannabis regulation? Is anybody in the city attorney's office, ahead of this terms? I really, I mean, I think, I think people in the resort area, the businesses that I've talked to would like to be at the table, and they've got some specific issues, but they just generally kind of want to be advised as well. I think one of the issues is they're not sure who to turn to for expertise. And I'm just seeking that within the issue, within the city structure.
Or as a city attorney's office, I'll, I'll leave that to Mark. I do believe that Bobby Tahan and our Planning Department, I know I've spoken to them many times, and they do have a handle on what was proposed, and as of, there's nothing we can do but if we were to.
And are, are they part of it? I mean, are you following it with Bobby and the city attorney's office or the, the kind of who within the city is following this legislation?
To speak for myself, I'm following it. But quite honestly, at this point, there's, if, there's nothing much to follow right now because it is just at kind of a stopping point until it's reestablished next year.
So I'm looking for a little more proactive reaction to see, knowing, knowing that we're probably going to have it. I realize that the law got wiped out and we're kind of starting again. But in particular, I'm concerned because of our resort area. It's a very sensitive area of the city, lots of visitors with lots of different ideas about consumption and cannabis products. I'm sure from different, coming from different backgrounds, it's new. So it's a, it's a critical piece, I think, for the resort area, and I just want to make sure the city is fully engaged in this process and not totally reactive. I understand, there's no law. Okay, so what do we do? We have to wait till they tell us what the law is. But I think having folks following it and being active in trying to come up with good laws, including cooperation with other areas in the state that may have been similarly situated, although we know there's no place quite like Virginia Beach. There may be some places that are similar and have similar concerns. I just have a concern that we don't, I think the RAC folks are concerned, and I'm speaking more for them, is that the city try to, try to kind of meet this. It's a complicated problem, and I do think Mr. Tahan's area is the real critical piece of it in terms of how we're going to, where we're going to allow sales and consumption and various things like that. But there doesn't seem to be any. But there doesn't seem to be any direct expertise that I know of right now, and I'm just seeking to know whether we have any or can get any.
Okay. Who's up? John, and then Michael, and then Sabrina.
My question is our expertise on taxation. Look at the Colorado, the California, the Oregon, the Washington State experience. They've, taxation and retail establishment created a, a market that never existed before, which was the black market, and they neither have, they realized the revenues, they thought they would realize, now they have a law enforcement problem they never had before, and has its own cost on localities trying to police all that.
Got it. One hundred.
And that is, you know, I like the local option for localities to opt out, but borders are pretty permeable, so that has its own issues. So it's like, unless you have a big ocean, it's hard to have a continental policy. But I am concerned, as we develop a policy, is that we really are, and our legislators too should be concerned, is the taxation issue can undermine everything you hope to achieve, and the real world is showing that to be the case. So I just have my doubts as to that you can think that this is, we're going to get lots of revenue and then not have lots of cost, and the revenues don't, don't appear, and that has been the extent of where it has happened. So I guess a word of caution.
Okay, thank you, Michael and Sabrina.
Thank you, Mayor. I think this is an opportunity, maybe more just take a moment to talk about the issue, which I think is what's happening now, than necessarily legislation that's related to the issue. We've had a chance to talk about this. I know I had a meeting with our economic development team about more than a year ago, re-explore some of the implications for this upcoming legislation and what that would look like for zoning and some other things. And they were very responsive to it, and I did a great job, and I'm very much appreciative of that. But I think what this discussion reveals is the necessity to continue that proactive discussion about whatever the legislation ends up with, what will be the impact for our city? I've seen it done very well in a planned way that distributes opportunity equally and preserves safety and promotes economic and health and, and physical well-being. And then I've seen it done where it looks like the Wild West, and it's very detrimental to our neighborhoods and to our community. Even recently, I would point to a scenario that I had in my district with people who were illegally, apparently illegally distributing cannabis, but they didn't, may, may not have known that. So I think we do need a lot of proactive, not just from your office, Ms. Bryan, certainly making sure we're on top of the legislation and stating what, what, you know, what we want will be best for our city, but also, as an administration, to be proactive about preparing for whatever the eventuality will be. I know I read an article that Norfolk is, is in the process of that planning now, so we may want to reach out to them and find out what their planning department is looking at. But I know that they're, they are making those sort of proactive, as far as I can tell, decisions about what they'd like to see for their community. And I think we need to get on the same page about what we'd like to see and then pursue it so that we can optimize all the opportunity that comes with cannabis and minimize the detrimental impacts. So I, I think we do need to be more proactive in that regard.
Thank you, Michael. Sabrina.
Thank you. And, you know, this, I think it's a pertinent time to talk about this issue because whether we like it or not, it's here. I mean, just about everywhere you go, people are talking about it, they're engaged in it. And so certainly, being proactive is the way we want to go. And I would even offer really having some key stakeholders become a part of whatever we decide to do, a part of that process. We need their input, we need to know the do's and don'ts, as was mentioned, but we really need to make sure we work with some key stakeholders in, in planning this and moving forward. But I would also like to get some information with, as it stands now, how, how, how do folks operate with, you know, cannabis? What, how do things operate in our city so that folks are not doing things that are illegal? You know, is there questions out there, and they, they really don't know, most folks really don't know how to operate and what to do? How many ounces? How many? So those types of things, and that may be for the staff. And, and also, I'd also like to say, the police department has done a great job of really getting out in front and saying, you know, things like, here's what, here's what we do, here's some information, you can go here, you know, and so we, those are things we can continue to do to make sure folks are aware, because I don't think everyone is aware of how we're operating, and especially as we're in limbo, waiting to see what the state is going to do. It's going to be helpful, I'm sure, and keep a lot of folks out of trouble, but most importantly, to help people operate in, in the right, in the right manner in our city.
Thank you, Patrick.
So I'm trying to get clarity on where council wants to go with this. Is it, is council asking for a briefing or update on information as it relates to enforcement of the individual use? Or how do we, of smoking marijuana? Or is it the hypothetical scenario, when the state possibly comes up with, whatever the state comes up with, of how we would allow for the distribution and sale of cannabis? And where did it geographically be located within the city, Virginia Beach? Or is it both?
I think my focus would be on the latter.
Got it.
Yeah, I, I think it's both, but with, I agree with Michael, the emphasis on the latter. I think this, I don't want my comments about the RAC to be misconstrued. This is an area that affects the whole city, and the RAC doesn't speak for the city, and it knows quite well that it doesn't. But yet, it's got an active committee that really wants to be, thinks we need to be involved, if for no other reason than the resort area. But I suspect there are a lot of citizens that would be interested in having a committee that's on top of it. What are other cities doing, and what are other areas? How can they affect it? Not all related to the legislative, but, but realizing that it's coming, there's going to be some legislative, you can make some reasonable predictions that, of what we're going to have. And rather than wait for the state to act and then say, okay, now let's put together a task force and decide how we're going to deal with that, I just think there's a feeling among a number of people that it might be good to have some kind of task force in place. Think about who ought to be on it, what areas, civic leagues, staffing, staff level, to just be given some more thought to it than, than we have today.
Hey, anybody else at this point?
All right.
I'm sure there's more.
A little bit more, continuing on affordable housing. This is definitely going to be coming back or coming to fruition in 2023, addressing affordable housing. You may wish to weigh in on some policy statements. And of the trends that we've been seeing, I just wrote a few down here that, not wanting to erode our local planning and zoning authority, there is some talk in Richmond that that is the way that they want to go, feeling that one of the barriers to affordable housing is our individual zoning laws. And our zoning department, for one, doesn't feel that that's the barrier. It's, it's much bigger than, than that. So making every, you know, coming in, having Richmond come in and change all of our zoning laws on top of us isn't really what they feel is the way to go. The one thing I did want to mention, I've been sitting in on a lot of affordable housing workshops lately, and one, the, the last one, the creation of a statewide portal to attract and assist developers of residential affordable housing. Apparently, our economic development has something like this at the state level, and some of the talk has been that many developers around the state, especially those that want to be affordable housing, just don't know where there's availability of space and what kind of incentives any locality would be willing to give. So they want to, it would be a voluntary portal that the state would set up, such as like an economic development type thing in opportunity zones, where you could say, here is a plot of land that the city would like to redevelop, sort of an RFP-type thing, and here's the incentives that we'll give you to, this is what we want, kind of thing. So that is something that's definitely being brought to light at the state and probably will be, will be happening. So it's something we might want to think about. And then in addition, any other, I'm assuming there's definitely going to be bills and things that come up on affordable housing, and I will, of course, bring all of those to your attention. And I know Councilmember Miles has been a big proponent of affordable housing.
John and Dulcino.
Go right ahead, because that's the end.
Go back that slide if you could.
You know, I'm sure all of you've been talking to local legislators too, and they have to run in November of '23, so no one's looking for bold policy initiatives to come out of the General Assembly in this session. So it gets back to, do you really think there's any traction that's going to be, that enabling legislation is going to be making out of a divided General Assembly in 2022, in the 2023 Assembly? I, I probably think there's a number of these things, and you look at the calculus and the political chemistry, that there, they might be talked about, but very little is going to see light of day. So you may not, we may not want to expend powder on something that the bullet's never going to leave the chamber.
Which is why I said maybe just policy statements, because that's what many of our sister cities are doing. I've spoken to, you know, Chesapeake, Norfolk, Newport News, and Hampton, we all kind of discuss these things, and they're all coming up with just basic policy statements on what they'd like to see, especially since, as you just mentioned, nothing, there're not going to be much controversial things happening. So it may be something that we carry for two years.
Okay. And then Dulcino, then Sabrina.
In those policy statements, is there anything addressing best practices for funding, public funding, to provide, either, either we bank land or something like that, as part of our overall strategy to provide these options?
You can certainly add something like that.
So without, you know, necessarily, as Mr. Moss was saying, without committing to it, but at the same time, at least put it on the table, and then post-election, maybe get more traction.
Right. And of course, we will have, you know, another budget to look at, so opportunities in the budget, I didn't even touch on the budget part yet.
Right.
Sabrina.
I do certainly like what you mentioned in terms of looking at what our sister cities are doing. I think we definitely need to do whatever we can to promote affordable housing. Happy to be supportive of this legislation as well, as we do certainly need definitely a change there. We need some champions on that, on that item. But also, I'm going to go back to the legislation about the curfews. Can I have more information on that? I'm just wondering what that's going to entail. I see the picture here, it looks like a picture of protesting, and I, I just want to make sure, you know, I get some clarity on where that's going, what type of impact that will have. I need some more information there.
And I really think that the city attorney can probably give you more about the nuance of the curfew. But as of right now, it's not really clear as to whether or not we can do something proactively. So, I mean, this, this is, mind my pictures, this is actually a picture of in Virginia Beach when there was some tear gas that had to be. In this kind of a situation where there is an imminent emergency like this, then there can be a curfew called, from my understanding. But yet, this is a proactive type thing where there's no situation that exists right now, but we are expecting there might be. I think that's just the difference of what we're not clear as to whether or not we have the authority to do.
Mm-hmm. So I want to be clear on it. So I do want some more information to be clear on what we are trying to do and how that's going to impact. Perhaps it is something, perhaps it is protesting, I don't, I don't know, but I do want to be clear, if I'm asked questions from the community, Ms. Wu, what does that mean?
And also to clarify, sorry, Mr. Mayor, also to clarify, these are requests from the sheriff's office and the, and the police department as well. So none of these are in your packet, until these council says they're in your packet. And I'll say, I'll say this from the concern that the police department and sheriff's office has, is that currently, right now, the only way that you can call a curfew outside of if a nuclear attack happened on Virginia Beach was if the governor's office called the curfew, right? There's, there are times when the police department and sheriff's office feels that it may be necessary or may make sense for the local government to have that authority beyond, beyond just a nuclear attack, that they like to be able to have that discretion for. But I think you're probably, you're right, we probably should have them come and provide more information and details about when that makes sense.
Please.
Okay. Rosemary and John.
Going back to the affordable housing, yeah, a lot of states have a housing fund that they help with affordable housing. So maybe could add something, funding for it. And then, a lot of times, we ask for funding for special projects here in our city. I don't know, we might want to put some thought into what we might want to ask. For example, maybe we want a parking garage at Rudy Loop, or, you know, there's a lot of other ideas that could pop up, but what are we thinking about some funding projects to ask for our delegation?
Aquarium would be a good one, either.
Okay, John.
I want to come back to Sabrina's point. You know, we, I think we always need to understand why local governments don't have authority and understand how that history came about. I think we've always been suspicious of, skeptic of government being able to curfew the exercise of people's liberties, and certainly, if we have something that shouldn't be being exercised by a constitutional officer, it should only be being exercised by someone who is responsible and accountable to the council, through the city manager, and at what point and how many hours or minutes after which it requires the council to convene for it to continue. Because I think people are, and rightfully so in America, skeptical of granting people the authority that restricts people's liberty for any extended period of time without legislative or judicial due process. So I, I think that needs a lot of careful consideration in the parameters, but I understand why in an incident, you've got to let an incident commander act in the moment, but the moment should be short-lived and be well-prescribed, and people's liberty should not be unduly constrained until the legislative body says it's necessary. So that's just my thought on it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Anybody else at this point with a question? Deb, thank you for your great work as usual.
In two weeks.
Sure will be back. Okay. Any council discussions or initiatives? Okay, Barbara.
Last week, when we were talking about the issue of our next steps for achieving that sustainability goal of clean, healthy, beautiful waterways, you had a list of next steps, and one of those was a, you know, community outreach and encouraging neighborhoods and community groups to host a fall cleanup event in October of 2022, and really talking about this whole bit of involving people voluntarily in learning how to make certain that we dispose of waste in the right fashion. I asked the staff to put together a resolution which would accomplish this, and this has got my name on it simply because I asked them to do that, but I would like to pass this around, and, and if this is something that you folks are interested in, and perhaps having on our agenda next week, I would like to have this, you know, by the city council, but it's a resolution which simply does what these next steps do, and I think helps us get out the word about how we can address these litter issues in a very voluntary fashion and cooperative fashion. One thing that in the, putting together the information that we had asked for last week, the fact that we have these special volunteer days, I would just mention that next week, Saturday, September 24th, is International Coastal Cleanup Day, which is sponsored by Keep Virginia Beach Beautiful. So we have these things ongoing, and I think helping to educate our, our people to just where all the opportunities are is important. And if you all are, are interested in, in this, I would ask for your, your comments so we know whether to put it on the agenda next week and whether or not this is something you would all like to be a part of.
Well, if we're going to do it in October, this is, next week's the last meeting in September, so you need to move on this.
Right.
You can put my name on it.
I guess so.
Okay, all right.
Put mine on it.
Okay. Everybody want to be a part, so this will be a resolution requested by the city council, and we won't have to put everybody's name on it.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, thanks very much, and forward to that.
Okay, anybody else? Yeah, John?
Just an update on noise, noise ordinance. We have sent out the first letter that went out to everyone who spoke, and we're sending out a second letter to state, all the stakeholders. I took your comments and your advisements, and we're going out to all these different organizations, Vision Rack, you name it, Toyota, we're sending them a letter as well. And then based upon that, we haven't yet set, there will be a morning and an evening meeting, the dates of cases haven't yet been set. We've also gathered the ordinances from New Orleans. You may recall that was one of the ones that was mentioned. Have we taken a look at what New Orleans has done with, I've read those are quite, quite lengthy, much longer than ours, and have some good things. And I also looked at the one for Boston, because Boston also has a performance aspect in their community and their subways and whatnot. So we have, and we have shared those with people as well. We'll keep you informed, but we are continuing to march out smartly, and we do appreciate the help of the staff. Nancy has been really outstanding.
And Lemon?
So part of the genesis of this noise ordinance was the Busker situation at the oceanfront, and we were looking at this conservancy idea. Where are we on that?
I could check in to see where we are with that one, to update.
Thank you.
Anybody else at this point? Okay, let's get into close here. The chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from the open meeting allowed by Section 2.237-11A Code of Virginia's amended order following purposes, personnel matters, discussions, considerations, or interviews of prospective candidates, employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, the motion salaries, disciplining or resigning from specific public officers, appointees, or employees of public bodies pursuant to Section 2.237-11A1, and that would be regarding council appointments, board, council boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees to have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
And motion in a second. Call the roll, please.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Berluti.
Aye.
Councilmember Brand.
Aye.
Councilmember Henley.
Aye.
Councilmember Holka.
Aye.
Councilmember Miles.
Aye.
Councilmember Moss.
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse.
Aye.
Councilmember Tower.
Aye.
Councilmember Wooten.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wilson.
Aye.
And Mayor Dyer.
Aye.
By a vote of 11 to zero, recess into closed session.
Okay, let's take five minutes.
So moved.
Okay, okay, we have a roll call.
Councilmember Berluti.
Aye.
Councilmember Brand.
Aye.
Councilmember Henley.
Aye.
Councilmember Holka.
Aye.
Councilmember Miles.
Aye.
Councilmember Moss.
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse.
Aye.
Councilmember Tower.
Aye.
Councilmember Wooten.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Dyer.
Aye.
By a vote of 11 to zero, you certify the closed session.
Okay, we are adjourned.